But you can go ahead and talk. You can start it.
Can I ask, as the minute taker for tonight's meeting, I know I saw that Eileen and Stephanie and Eric all responded they would not be here. So are the nine plus Angela, right? Is that who we're expecting tonight as I just start to take minutes for tonight?
Christina will not be join us. Christina, Eileen, Eric, and Stephanie.
Yep.
And there was a fifth person.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Looks like you have 10 members here, Megan.
Yep, that's what I have too. Thank you, Angela. Okay, all set. Thank you. I have two computers going, so if you hear me clicking away, it's because I'm on video on one and note-taking on the other.
Okay, so we are recording, it looks like. So, good evening, everybody. It's Tuesday, October 19th, and we're here for our committee to study ways to approve attendance at town meeting. And we do have a quorum. So that's a good thing, because we had several people who would not be able to join us. So first point of order is any announcements or anything to be discussed for open forum?
I just, oh, sorry, Diane, can I say something? I just wanted to say thank you, everybody who was able to distribute and put up the flyer. I wasn't able to bring it places, but I saw it in a lot of places that I visited prior to town meeting. I don't know that it necessarily helped us with this particular meeting, because it's pretty low attendance, but I was encouraged to see it out there. So thank you, everybody, for taking the time to put it up.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Megan, and the team that you work with to get it up. Angela?
Yes. So I just want to say that, Megan, we had nine articles, absolutely nothing of any controversy, really very little to attract people to the meeting. So I don't think it was a failure. I mean, I certainly would want more people, but we got a quorum at nine minutes after one, which we were very, very worried about getting a quorum. And I attribute that to the fact that you guys did such good publicity with it. Really, thank you all very much.
Great, thank you.
We did have, so that kind of rolls into another item coming up, but let's approve the minutes first. So do people get a chance to read unless there are any other announcements or anything else to be discussed at open forum?
You guys can now start your videos.
There we go.
Sorry about that, guys.
We'll get this eventually. We'll get this eventually.
We've come out of the dark.
Thank you, Alyssa. Any other open forum or announcements that people want to jump in on? Okay, let's go to the 7:10 PM agenda item to approve the minutes from October 5th. If you recall, these are simply updated minutes that, rather than using initials, the names of members were called out. And that was the only change in that. Does anybody have any comments or input for those minutes? If not, let's approve. Do we get a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second?
Second.
Second. Say all in favor. We're gonna read off names, see who's here. Tom?
Yes.
Megan?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Dana?
I wasn't at the meeting, so I'm going to abstain.
Sally?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And I am a yea on that, too. Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, the next agenda item was discuss learnings from recent STM and any actions, which we did start to roll into. So comments or input from you, Angela, about STM?
Well, of course, I would have rather there were 400 people than 200 people there. But again, I, you know, I think that everybody was very, very worried about achieving the quorum at all. So the fact that we did do that is a certain accomplishment. I mean, it's not what we want, but it's better than not getting the quorum at all. So, other than that, I don't know how it went at the newcomers table, but it seemed great and fun, and I hope people stopped there. It seemed like it was in a good place, and I would be, I hope we would do that again. Yeah, and then if anybody has any suggestions for me, of course.
For those of you who may not have seen us or were aware, Christina, Tom, and I were at a table where the packets were with their own little table with little tags that said, "Have a question, ask a question." So if anybody did have any questions about town meeting, they could ask us. I think it was a good introduction and, you know, start, good visibility. Ironically, I told Angela that I did, there was one woman who really did come up and had never been to town meeting before, and she ended up sitting next to my husband and I on the field. And every once in a while, she would turn and ask a question while we were sitting there. But she truly had not been, and she's been in town for 17 years, to top it off. So she thought it was a great gesture, but that was just one person, but maybe it'll catch on. So we'll learn, you know. So if you have suggestions, Tom, if you have any suggestions to being at that table, to encourage, and we didn't advertise it either. So this was, you know, a first run, a first last-minute run at trying to make ourselves available to anybody who, you know, may have a question.
Yeah, two suggestions. I think maybe the next time, excuse me, we need a bigger sign at our table. However, what drew the people to our table was all the candy that I think Christina brought. I thought it was good. I talked to several people. One had only been to one other town meeting, and I know the one you're talking about, Diane, and it was nice that they came up, introduced themselves. And I think if we had had more time to, you know, to publicize the meeting, I think we would have gotten maybe a few more people who had never been. But I think overall, for a quick put-together, I think it was a success.
Thank you. And in hindsight, I'm kicking myself now, because I didn't ask that woman her name, and she would have had some valuable input, valuable input, being, you know, a newcomer to town meeting. So maybe we'll run into her in the near future. The candy did help. I had asked Patty whether or not we could move the table closer to where the registration, you know, where people were registering as they came in, but that didn't seem to work out. But I think we can fine-tune that, because I think it was, you did have to walk the ways to get to the table, you know. Megan?
See, I saw Dana had her hand up first before me. Dana, did you want to go first, and then I can go after you?
Sure. I was just gonna make a quick comment, that my husband attended town meeting on Saturday for his first time. So I went for my first time in June. He went his first time this past weekend. Hopefully the stars align in the spring, and the two of us can make a day of it together and figure that out.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. So yeah, I think, as you said, Tom, for a very last minute rushed pull together, it was fine. And we'll, you know, see what happens for annual town meeting. There'll be more traffic for annual town meeting. We'll see whether or not we're inside or outside. So logistically, if we're at Abbott, we'll have to be creative, because the spacing in Abbott really isn't conducive to a lot of, we could be outside in the hallway, I guess. You know, but we'll need to get through. Okay.
Diane, could I?
Megan's got her hand.
Sorry, I just wanted to make a few very quick comments. So one was, I did reach out after our last meeting to the ghostwriter, both the staff, the two editors, and they have a general ghostwriter email. But I followed them on Instagram, and I never saw anything. Did I miss something? Did anybody who follows them on Instagram see anything? So I don't, I, yeah, I don't think anything was put out. It was not a whole lot of notice and time, and I do understand that they've obviously got a lot going on. And this was certainly not a warrant that would drive our young voters in town. However, I think that should be a goal of next time. Even with this item of the Blanchard Roof, I found myself with my, you know, sort of old school committee hat in the audience texting Val or Alicia to ask some of the questions that I had about things that weren't brought up. And I thought, well, at this point, so I made this observation, both for that item and for, I guess it was the voting discussion, that I thought, well, if the vote's gonna go a certain way, it looks like everybody's gonna support this, then there's kind of no point in asking these questions that I think would add information to things. Because sometimes, I'm sure there are people in the audience, and I feel this way, sometimes I might ask a question, illuminate something about it, maybe for the audience. So as an example, with the Blanchard Roof, I wanted to know if it was an MSBA project, which is a national school building association that will reimburse a great portion of that cost, which is very common with roofing projects at schools. I think that kind of information would be really helpful to the voters of town, even if they're going to approve it. So I don't know how we work those kinds of things in. When it came up to the voting discussion, I found myself wondering what the square footage area of our lakes and ponds are in comparison, because there was a lot of discussion about, you know, oh, what's next? This is the gateway to saying that we can't vote on Forge and Nab and everything else. So I feel like there was, even though there was some discussion around that topic, there was some missing, like, key factual information that would have just helped kind of illuminate that discussion. So that's just kind of food for thought, Angela. I don't know how that works in, it's in the future, but.
I, I think probably more information ahead of time. Those are all questions that could have been easily answered ahead of time in some sort of, you know, Q and A that's published, questions about this article or that. And I really think we should do more of that, because all of those things that you're talking about are, were important. But you're right, when it seems like a vote is going, you don't want to be the person to stand up and extend the discussion when people want to move things along. So, yeah, I think we have, I think I have to somehow get better at putting that information out there ahead of time. But I think maybe more than just the league review.
Review.
Yeah, yeah, some other kind of published Q and A, either on the town website or moderator page or something like that.
This also, Megan, circles back to our discussion about hesitancy to ask questions. And if you haven't attended town meeting a lot, feeling awkward, and is it, is what you're asking so basic, it's so simple a question, you're embarrassed, that, you know?
So that goes back to, in my daytime job, I'm a substitute teacher. That's like a classroom thing. I say to my kiddos all the time, don't be afraid to ask a question. If you have that question, somebody else does, too. And that's in a room of 18 or 20 kids. So maybe that's something, Angela, that you could say at the very beginning, you know? If you, if you are wondering something, don't be afraid to come up, because that means somebody else in the audience has that same question.
I did say exactly that.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry.
At the end, I said, I said, don't hesitate to ask a question. If you have a question, that means somebody else on the field has the same exact question. But you know what else? So if we did do stuff ahead of time in written format, and then had some way for people to access it from town meeting electronically, I mean, this is the whole QR code or a link that you can go to, that we could, you know, maybe get them to publish in the warrant book that shows, if you want more information about this article, go here. And then there would be Q and As about that article, answering those types of questions, which would make it a lot easier for many people who are sitting there with their phones in their hands, to get some questions answered without taking up any time, any extra time. I'm not trying to discourage people from answering, asking questions, but you also, it's that fine balance. Don't, you don't want to make it so long that nobody will come, but you don't want to discourage people from asking questions, either.
Valerie?
Yeah, I was just gonna add that, I don't know if she's always done this, or maybe I'm just hypersensitive because of this group now about our publicity methods and stuff, but regarding a town meeting. But, so I don't know if Jody always does this, but in her newsletter for October that went out last week, she did like a bulleted list in what I would call like layperson's language, that was kind of like, you know, here are the things kind of coming up that you could show up and vote on. And I thought that was really helpful. And I tried to do something similar on my Facebook page about like, what's the most, like, you know, the kind of shortest description you could do for each article that gives, to Megan's point, some sort of basic informational knowledge about it, but it doesn't, even like the words warrant and article, right, I think can get really confusing. So anyway, I just thought that Jody's breakdown was really helpful. If anyone hasn't seen it, to go back to her October newsletter, she does like a quick bulleted list of the topics.
Sally?
As, I was thinking about how if we, you know, have a code for people to go onto the internet, that's a real problem at Abbott, because there's, you don't get a signal there. I mean, a lot of times I'm sitting in there, and I get nervous sometimes, because I'll leave my kids home now that they're older. And at Abbott, that's a problem, because they can't always get me. So I wouldn't rely on having a QR code for information once we're back at Abbott, because it, it really isn't. People don't get a signal there.
Anybody else? Well, clearly, actions that we can pull together, depending on where we are, if we're inside, if we're outside. But I think the whole point of this committee is to put a list of these things together and identify the most efficient way to communicate, whether it be QR code, whether it be newsletters, whatever it may be, and improve, you know, what we have from there. Anything else about Saturday? How many, Angela, how many people did we, how many voters?
Sorry, I don't know exactly. I have to get in touch with Patty, and we haven't had a chance to get together yet this week. I don't think it was that much more than 200, maybe 220 or something.
I had asked her yesterday, and she said the report was gonna be, the summary was gonna be worked on today.
Yeah, I didn't think she knew yet, yeah.
Right, you know, from their perspective. Okay. Okay, our 7:25, moving along with 7:25 agenda item, report out any working group progress. I know we just pulled these groups together two weeks ago. So not sure if there's any progress at this point or not, but maybe each group, someone from each group can just report out where you are at this point in two weeks. Tom?
Sorry. I'll start out, Diane. We had a little trouble just figuring out what night we could meet. Eric was traveling. Steve is obviously a busy guy, running meetings at night. Kathy and I were pretty much available, but we ended up having a meeting last night, lasted one hour. It was just kind of an organizational meeting. And I think, you know, where I offered to pull together the first meeting, somehow, when we had the election last night, I was elected as the chair of that work group. I suspect the three of them talked before the meeting.
Kathy's laughing.
But Eric, Eric has offered to send out the link. He has the upgraded version of Zoom, so he's gonna send out the link every month. We decided we would meet monthly. And he's recording the short meeting. We're trying to keep it to one hour, unless there's something extravagant that we need to discuss. And he sent out the link today, and that worked very well. He's gonna be writing up the minutes, but at least we can all see, you know, what was said last night. So as a work group, we will report each month to the ATM, to the general group. And that way, we don't have to, you know, take votes, do any posting or anything like that. So we talked last night about goals, objectives, targets of the remote participation work group. And I mean, basically, our overall goal is to identify methods of remote participation by our 17,000 Westford registered voters. What we intend to do along those lines is identify through research what needs to happen with state law by statute. In other words, we'll research the state law first, figure out what it says, and determine what we need to do to change that, if that's possible. We're gonna, we'll research the town meeting laws at mass.gov for the legalities of trying to do this. We'll generate, as a group, we will generate in between meetings, concrete ideas, and summarize in a one paragraph description to solidify what our target is. Steve Edwards has put together a Google Docs spreadsheet, which he sent out during the meeting last night, where each of us can enter our thoughts and ideas during the month, and, you know, and what we're doing on the research efforts. So I think that's a, it's a common spreadsheet that we'll use, and I think that that was a good suggestion that Steve had. Let's see, Steve discussed, and I'm not gonna try to even admit that I understood most of this, or any of it, what he called NFT, the non-fungible tokens. These are digital tokens stored in a wallet. This is eventually down the road for remote participation. We talked a little bit about security. We didn't want to get ahead of ourselves and try to come up with solutions, but we're just talking about possibilities at this point. We discussed two towns, Salem, New Hampshire, that votes by ballot right now. After two general meetings in January and February, then they have the general meeting in March, and people send in their ballots to the town hall. I'll bring them down to town hall. And also, I thought it was interesting, Lexington, the town of Lexington this year, did their annual town meeting by electronic voting. Now, they have a representative form of government. They worked for a number of months putting all this together, and they said it went reasonably well. They had a couple of glitches where, you know, some of the, two of the representatives, I think, didn't have computers, and they made sure they were brought over to someone else's home. I think one of the representatives was disabled, and I think they actually brought her to the town hall. So they had a couple of glitches, but overall, they said it went extremely well. They got approval from the state to do that during COVID. I suspect they're hoping that will continue after COVID. And that was about it. We had one question for Angela. The question is, you know, is there a way that we can ask other towns of the 351 towns in Massachusetts to see if any other town is working on electronic participation, remote participation, that type of thing? In other words, if there's some ideas out there that we could utilize, instead of re-venting the wheel, we would love to do that.
So actually, the Mass Moderators Association had lots of information. I gathered and sent out the information that we really needed, like, in the last two weeks. For, I know, Diane, I sent you, and Megan, I think I sent you some stuff, right, from the Mass Moderators Association, having to do with public signs leading town meeting and stuff like that. But I think there was also a study on there, Tom, about remote participation. I have to go back to the website and see. That would be the best way to get that information, because that's exactly what they do, is keep track of every town meeting, both representative and open town meetings, in the Commonwealth. So they're, they're clearly the organization best suited to get this information from, or maybe even to ask if they don't have this information, to ask if we could have them put out a questionnaire or something. In the year and a half that I've been moderator, I've gotten at least three questionnaires through them, asking for, they keep them pretty simple. I think they suspect people won't respond if they don't, you know. Sometimes it's only two or three questions. The longest one might have been, might have been 20 questions, but easy to answer. So I will go back to their website this week and see what else I can find there to send you. And then maybe we can talk about whether we want to enlist them to do some kind of surveying of the moderators about this.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thanks, Angela.
Tom, when are you meeting again?
November 18th. Yeah, so we'll have a monthly meeting, unless there's a major reason to have one sooner. We'll be doing a lot of research between meetings, and again, filling out Steve's spreadsheet. But the next official meeting of this remote participation group is November 18th.
Okay. Angela, what are you, what are you thinking are, and I think I asked this at our first meeting, what is your expectation for milestones to the select board? Meaning, we'd probably come up with recommendations. Are you expecting that we'll report out progress at some point? Or are you hoping we'll have our recommendations nailed down by April 1st? Or give me some sense, or give this team some sense of what the thinking is?
I think it's, would be great if you had your recommendations down by April 1st, but I think that's a little ambitious. But, I mean, why not do it on a rolling basis? If there's some low-hanging fruit that you can come to, for example, if perhaps this group took a vote and decided that we should really look into clickers and instituting that in town, you know, that's, that's something I really want to do. I'm gonna do it anyway, but it would be great to have this group behind that. It's a small thing, but I think it could have an immediate effect. On the other hand, if you're gonna talk about how to change state law so that we can have remote voting, that's, that's gonna take some time to firm up to the point where you could present it to the Board of Selectmen. But I would think if, you know, if you could make a report to the Board of Selectmen within six months, that I think they'll be happy with that. And this Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, this select board, Andrea would kill me if she heard me saying that again and again. This select board is very empowering of committees. I mean, I find them to be a group that gives a committee a charge, and then when you come back, they're happy to hear that you've had some results, and they're willing to get behind them. So take advantage of that, you know, as soon as you can, because elections happen, it may not be the same board next year.
So we're thinking recommendations or actual implementation? And I know I'm really nailing this, but is there an expectation that we would actually implement, or are these recommendations with a time window?
Well, I don't know that, I'm not sure what you would have the authority to implement. I think the Selectmen are gonna have to do the implementation. So recommending something is probably what, what you're gonna want to do. But a strong recommendation, you know, But a strong recommendation, you know, I mean, so here's just, just a couple of little things that I think, and these are just in my mind. It doesn't mean you guys need to do it, but I asked, I had asked Jody before this town meeting, if we could do a reverse 911 call to tell everybody, town meeting on Saturday, please come on Thursday. So she didn't want to do it because they don't like to use that for anything but emergency. And then I asked Chris Chu, who initially said yes, and then I think he sort of thought about it and said no. But it's sort of the same thing. I started thinking about it and I was like, why not? Why can't we do that? What is the real reason behind us not wanting to make that effort to show how important time, town meeting is, that we can do this reverse 911 call or the superintendent's microphone call, whatever you call it? I mean, I think, I think we should get behind that. Diane, you and I were talking about childcare. And if that is an issue, you know, we talked about rec being the most obvious place where it should happen, but there seems to be some resistance against that. What's, what's behind that resistance? What's important? Is it important to get people to town meeting or not? How important is that? If it's really of major importance, can we get over some of these stumbling blocks to the little things? So I think recommendations from this committee, and I don't mean necessarily that those have to be the recommendations, but I think recommendations from this committee will be taken very seriously.
Thank you. Before I, before I go to Megan or Tom, Valerie, school, school department now uses the reverse 911 for things other than emergencies, correct? Or did I mishear that?
I think it's been sort of up to the superintendent. It's been done, handled differently by the predecessor versus the current occupant of that position. So it's, it's kind of, I think it's kind of up to that, the superintendent. If Dr. Chu has a different interpretation of how to use that, then maybe that's what he's relaying to Angela. I'm not sure.
Okay. Megan? Can't hear you.
Megan, you're muted.
I apologize. I was, I'm just raising my hand to update on our subgroup next. So if Tom has something on this, then no worries.
Okay. Tom?
I just wanted to add one little bit. Angela reminded me that when she mentioned about the clickers, we did discuss that briefly last night. I think all four of us were disappointed when Jody's recommendation, was that a year or so ago? For the use of clickers did not pass. I think that that would be at least a small way towards electronic participation. And people, voters would then at least see that there are some new methods or some new processes that can be used other than, you know, raising your hand, raising the orange card or whatever. So I would be all for sending a recommendation in the near future to the select board that this group, this ATM committee recommends that we try and use the clickers again at the next town meeting.
Okay. Did someone else, Megan, you did, did anybody else have their hand raised on, on this working group? Okay. And the working group, I forgot the formal name of it, that's, that's doing the research with cities and towns?
Community data collection is what is on our minutes from last time.
Okay.
So in Christina's absence, I had said that I would send out our emails and got sort of overcommitted. So Christina said that she would do that, but now she's, she's not here tonight. So I'll just update quickly that our, we have not met yet. Our first meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, the 21st in the morning. I know Christina did a little bit of, both of us sort of doubled up and did the same research about, just quickly looking on the mass.gov website to access the cities and towns and find out what kind of town government they have, whether, whether they have town meeting or not. And just looking at the parameters around that, I found interesting. So I think that will probably be a good kickoff to our discussion because looking at populations of cities and towns and what type of government they have, we are definitely at that strange place where we have town meeting government, but we have a number of residents where it really is impossible for everybody to participate. There are lots of towns that have, you know, in the 5,000 to 10,000 range. And so if you think about what their voting population is, registered voters, it's even less than that. There are not a lot of cities and towns that have as large of a population as we do and have town meeting government. And I think right there, that says a lot about the difficulties of access. I'm not suggesting that we change our form of government. I just think it's an interesting observation to look at. And hopefully will be interesting to reach out to those cities and towns and find out what hurdles they have as well. Because it's probably a lot of the same things. Even in a best case scenario world, there, there is no place and no way to have 17,000 people show up and vote in the way we have town meetings structured currently. So I think that will be kicking off our discussion, but we are meeting on Thursday.
And the third group was that surveys, town, townwide data collection.
Valerie, did you want to update? Because Valerie found a ton of excellent information. We also have not met yet. We've been having trouble finding a date that works for all of us, but we've been working on a, a shared Google Doc that Valerie set up.
Yeah, I found a couple of towns that have done surveys recently to their residents about things that are working or not working. I think the three towns were Southborough, Acton. I'm missing one. Linfield. Linfield. And so I just kind of, to get us going, like Sally said, we're having trouble finding a time. So to get us going, I kind of tried to pull those three survey questions all into one document. So we could kind of manipulate them offline at our own convenience and see the themes that come together. You know, a lot of them are, you know, what's keeping you from attending? Where do you hear about town meeting? What would you like to improve? So there's a lot of common themes, there's a lot of redundancies. So we're just trying to kind of get the juices flowing to get to a template.
Great. Any, any other comments about the working groups? I think, I think whatever, whatever timeframe we're all thinking about, we're probably going to have to double it based on everyone's schedule and how busy everybody is. So if you think, oh, I can do this in a month, it's probably going to take two months from my past experience. So plan, plan appropriately. Megan?
The only other quick thing I wanted to say that I forgot, when Tom mentioned about the clickers. And I agree that we should all be on board and be pushing this through, not only for efficiency sake, but there is a huge part of that that is also appealing from an anonymous and anonymity standpoint. And there was nothing contentious at this meeting, but we've all been to town meetings where you think, God, I don't want to stand up and hold this orange card. Who's around me? You know, you're looking around. So I think that that's a big push as well to get more people to come, that this is a way to have your voice heard with no stigma attached to your vote.
Okay, thank you. Were you all at the, the meeting, was it two years ago now? For clickers? The town meeting? So everybody was there? All right. So we could do much better. In my humble opinion, having, having talked to Acton, having been in the middle of it, having been on that mini committee with Patty Doobie and Mike Wells. The number, the number one message that I got from talking to some of the communities about the devices was, was the fact that enough time for communication and for forums and educating the community is critical. As you could see, people were at that meeting where we, where we were going to implement clickers, had a lot of questions and a lot of doubt. Angela?
Yeah, so with that in mind, and since it seems like there's sort of a general consensus, I think, I think, and I'm not trying to be pushy, but if you guys take a vote on that, I'll go to the Selectmen. I'll get on the next agenda and say, you know, I'd like to start looking into this with the idea of bringing it as a test to, to the next annual town meeting in March. But in order to do that, I really, really have to start now. Stuff just takes a long time. So especially if you're trying to educate the public. And I, I'd like to start getting it out there if we're going to do it. So we don't have that same fiasco we had last time. I don't think that's possible. But I, it really requires educating people. It does.
Okay. So, so as a, as a committee, do we want to take a position? And we, do we want to make a motion that Angela move forward with going to the Select Board to request that they put that on an agenda item to move forward?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Who seconded that? Was that you, Tom?
I did.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And we'll go through a vote. Tom?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
And myself, or an I?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add before you did the roll call for just a bit of brief discussion, I guess. It feels a little like, I mean, I feel like my vote is in support of investigating it. But I would love to have, you know, a bigger conversation about it, just to make sure we're not missing any obvious. I don't know. It just feels a little quick to, to be.
No, no, no. Right, Angela, that was my interpretation. This is the investigation to start the discussion.
Yeah, so if people are in favor, what I'll go to the Board of Selectmen with is a request that they reignite the investigation of using clickers at town meeting with the support of this committee. And that if we can start having discussions about it as that investigation moves forward, does that make sense? So, so, so if I hear you Valerie saying not, not necessarily.
But I just think for due diligence, that we should kind of have it. But the investigation may not necessarily be us, right? Like if, if the Select Board is the body that would ultimately decide, then we, I think our vote just said that we're supporting moving forward and investigating it. But I just wanted to clarify that.
I think that's actually important for public relations too, because it makes it seem less like it's being imposed on people. We don't want it to seem like it's being imposed on people. We want it to seem like we're looking into it to make a determination.
Megan?
I know we, I know we just voted, but would it help if I read aloud the motion that I recorded, Valerie? Would that make you feel better to hear that? And Steve, I know you made this motion and said, yes, I, I agree. But as far as wording, let me know if we have edits this. I said, Steve moved and Tom seconded that we as a group support the use of electronic voting devices at future town meetings and furthermore, support asking the Select Board to actively investigate the use of such devices.
Sounds good.
Do we want any changes to that? Does that feel too aggressive or too much like we're saying, use them immediately?
I think it sounds fine. You're asking them, you're telling them that we support the use of the clickers and we're asking them to investigate the use of those clickers for the next town meeting.
So are we comfortable, so the investigation part is the second part of that, right? And I think we're clear on, on, on that. Are we, do we all agree that we do all support using clickers?
Yep. Yes.
Sally?
The only question I would have, and I don't remember it that well. I was at that town meeting where it failed. I had voted for it, so I feel like I was convinced that the cost wasn't too high at that time. But I would be, you know, I would want information about the cost versus.
Of course.
Yeah, so I mean, I would, I definitely, I can't see myself changing my vote from the last town meeting. I was pretty convinced that the clickers were a good idea then, so. But I don't, I don't remember what the cost was.
So you can rent them, you can lease them or, and or buy them. There are different options. And that's, it's, the whole project was fairly complicated, but that will all come out in the investigation. So there are various different models that can be used. But key to all this, of my takeaway was making sure that the community understands pros and cons, if there are cons, has a voice and feels comfortable so that when they do come to town meeting, there are no surprises. And unfortunately, last time I thought there were surprises that. Angela's laughing.
And, and you know what? There's probably been changes in the last two years, especially in these last two years. I'll bet there have been advances in the use of, of electronic voting devices in the last couple of years, so.
Steve?
Well, and to me, the, the important thing is just to start making some noise. And, you know, get the, the Select Board talking about it, that their meetings, and, you know, get it in front of the voters, that this is a thing that is coming down the pipeline. Because I think that was one of the big problems that we had last time. Nobody knew it was coming until they got to the meeting and they handed a clicker and said, here, we're going to use this tonight.
Right. Right.
We're going to use this to vote on deciding whether or not to use it.
Yes, yes. Yes. It went from bad to worse.
I think.
Quite candidly, also now our town manager is, is not in favor of, at least that was, that was what I understood, having been through the last session. So education, you know, having the Select Board take a position and everything you said, you know, to investigate and resurrect it and get the visibility. And Steve, as you said, start the discussion, right? So, you know. Okay, so, so Megan, I think, I think you heard a yes on the words.
Yep.
You okay with that? Okay. We digressed. What else, what, did we, we did go through the complete vote. Okay, so that was unanimous on that. So we support it and we want Select Board to, we support the investigation and we support the use of it. And we want Select Board to look into it further. Okay. Last on the agenda was to talk a bit about communications and publicity and how to operationalize all the communications. So key, key to, I think we all violently agree, key to all of this is having a plan that is, is not, is proactive versus reactive of who we communicate to, when we communicate. That's all, all part of the annual town meeting. You know, communications and education to the community. So we do things today, but we do one offs. And then someone thinks of the Facebook page we could join. Or we'll think about Ghost Rider at the last minute. So it's not a plan, in my humble opinion, not, not a planned, structured, you know, communication plan that, that tells me what it is, who's doing it and when it is. So that, that's another thing that, that we can discuss. And part of that was the communication plan that I had sent out in one of the emails that Angela, you had worked on with, with Anita. You know, regarding what types of communication. And and I thought I had it already opened. Okay, maybe I do here. Okay, can people see that?
Yes.
So, so this was sent out to all of you and was, is a great start. So, so this was sent out to all of you and what was, is a great start that we could add to. What, what's missing is the who's gonna do it. And we have verbiage like frequency that's as updated as, as needed. So it would be helpful as we move forward to build on this and fine tune it and identify who is doing it and when they're doing it. So this is newsletters, this is Facebook, this is Angela, your page. And we would add Ghost Rider to this. We would add, uh, you know, potentially, um, 911, not 911, but reverse, you know, um, phone calls to this. So, you know, I don't know if anybody else has any comments about this, but I think this is a great start. But it would need to be, you know, uh, really tightened up rather than, rather than, um, people jumping in, making suggestions and then going off and doing it. So for, for any town meeting, it would be, we would operationalize it, so to speak. Angela, thoughts?
Yeah, I feel like, I mean, of all these things, essentially what I did was my town moderator's webpage and, um, I mean, I helped work on the content for that, for the, uh, flyer, but without Megan's, it was so boring until Megan spruced it up.
Yeah.
You know, all of these things are great, because you have to, you have to hit people five times for any, any advertising, so, before they even hear it.
Right, and I, I don't think we're there yet of be, having a, a more of a formal task list, day one, day five, day six, you know, um. And as boring as that sounds, it's the consistency and try to capture the audiences. Any, any comments about this chart?
I think all this stuff is great. I think that, you know, it's what we tried to do for this will probably be look and feel different from annual town meeting, because the warrant will be different. There will be things that will be drivers for certain groups of people to get there. So it was a little bit unique. I, I almost feel like that was, you know, the test run, a little bit of some of the things and a lot of it was last minute, leading up to the bigger meeting when there are things to be publicized. As we talk about, we talked a little bit about, you know, making, um, graphics or catchier things that might target a few more interesting or, or, I don't want to use the word contentious, because let's hope they're not, but, you know, more sort of things that would drive voters. You know, that will happen for annual town meeting, I would guess. And so there might be new things that come up or new ideas that we have about target audiences and how to reach them based on what that warrant looks like. That's my only real comment.
Uh huh. And we could, I don't think, this, this was not put together, um, with only special town meeting in mind. I think it was just a generic, what ways can we communicate for, for our town meetings? That's all. So, um, if there are, as you're suggesting, Megan, more targeted approaches to use, most definitely. Okay, communications is in.
Tom has his hand up, Diane.
Sorry, Tom?
Yeah, just a quick question. I, I don't know if we've ever used a banner in the center of town. I know we use those for some functions, Strawberry Festival or, or whatever. But for a week before annual town meeting or special town meeting, I mean, is it possible to put up a banner? That huge banner going from one side of the street to the other?
The League does that, Tom. The League does that. The League of Women Vote is does that, yes.
Oh, great, what a great suggestion.
For years, for years.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna go back to sleep now.
Yes. It's okay. Right across from, from the library, well, First Parish, I'm sorry. Across, across the road, uh, in front of First Parish.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, Diane.
We all need a nudge.
What's going on? So the fact that you don't recall it kind of says it all, as I'm sitting here thinking. But people are running in five different directions, so. And after you look at something for a while, I, you know, you're oblivious to it. Sally?
So I talked to a member of the League about that banner and I heard that it is getting increasingly difficult to find anyone who will even put that banner up for any price, that they're worried that it's going to become an issue. We were thinking of it for our library book sale, because, you know, right outside the library would be great. And I heard about all of the drama around getting that up. So I would be worried that that is not a achievable goal in the long term to keep that banner up. Um, I don't know if it'll always be there, but I noticed it because I'm at the library all the time. So I do appreciate it and it does help me remember when town meeting is.
Yeah, it, it has received a lot of, you know, good vibes and people, people do see it. And we have, the, the League also has the small yard signs, which some of you may see, uh, in, in various locations. But the, but the banner has been a challenge. Years and years ago, uh, the town, uh, kept the, the banner. Patty kept it in the town clerk's office. And I'm not sure if they invested any money. I wanted to make the recommendation that, that Angela, that we split the cost. We, meaning the League, split the cost with, with the town regarding all of that. But it went from bad, bad to worse regarding how complicated it was. Because the, um, the banner was put on utility polls and then it was, well, do we have National Grid's approval? And what about the liability? And it, you know, every year it becomes an issue, a time consuming, you know, um, issue to try to sort out. Because it seems to change depending on the year and who you talk to. And then the banner, the banner needs changing, right? We have Printing Solutions, uh, modifies the banner based on when town meeting is. So there's a cost associated with that, um, that, that the League picks up. So if we go from Monday back to Saturday, whoops, that's another change. So it gets, it gets good visibility. I, I don't know, does, do people actually, does it register with most of your neighbors and friends, you think?
Except for Tom, yeah.
You're not gonna live this one down, Tom, I don't think. Valerie?
I'm not coming to the next couple of meetings.
Diane, someone's asking in the chat, um, I think we have a couple of viewers, and someone's asking if there's a place to get the yard signs so that they could be more widely distributed. Are they, is there a stash of them somewhere that the League holds on to?
So, so whoever that person is can send, send an email, go to the League website and send a note off to the League asking about getting signs. That, the, the yard signs also have been a challenge, because we keep on changing the date and the time and the location. So their, mine right now is all docked it up with, with white corkwood and magic marker and, you know. Angela?
So, um, I can see that the banner across the road is problematic or may be problematic in the future. But we've got a lot of real estate in the center of town. A lot of buildings that have signs that could hold banners. It may not be quite as good as having something across the roadway, but they're pretty visible, especially in the town center, because people go around it, you know, in both, almost in both directions. So I wonder if an alternative might not be to have some banners that could be put on Town Hall or, um, the library. I bet the PCA would allow it, I bet the church would allow it, um, that are advertising town meetings. And these days, those six foot banners, even a 12 foot banner is not that expensive. You can have them made up online pretty quickly and for fairly short money. I know that for a fact. So maybe, maybe that's a suggestion to, to, uh, replace that difficult to put up, banner across the roadway with some banners that go on the buildings.
Last year, I, I think, um, they were going to put it on, not PCA, but on one of the buildings on Lincoln Street. I'm not sure whether or not it was the fire station, but there was some talk about that. But I'll, I'll bring that forward, Angela, that's a great suggestion. I was, while you were saying that, I was thinking of a, even a freestanding, um, poster banner on the common itself.
Yep.
You know, we have a sandwich board, um, and, and having anything on the common then, then gets into getting permission, getting approvals, going through the select board, and how long it stays up, how long it doesn't stay up. You know, nothing is easy in town, right? You know, to, to do that. But putting them on some of the buildings may, may be a way to get around that. Uh, or, or just more options to look at. Thank you. Someone else have their hand up? Megan?
Or we have a big waiting to be demolished fire station in the center of town. We could wrap that. Come and discuss this at town meeting.
I think that was, I, I think that indeed was one of, Lynn Cohen initially had thought we could put something up there and then that, that idea went by the wayside. It, it's just been a thorn, you know, in, in general, to, to ensure. And then we have to get approval, um, months in advance from select board to put it up. It's not just an automatic, you'd think after 15 years, it, it would just be, be an automatic.
We could do, we could do a teaser campaign. What's coming to, uh, the land on Boston Road, Gateway to Westford? You'll have to come to town meeting to find out. Probably get the most attendees of all time.
Right, right. You know, anything that, that is legal and, you know, appropriate and works. We can be creative and do what we need, do what we need to do.
Well, another, Diane, if I could, another thing that you might do, instead of having to come back to the Board of Selectmen every year about this stuff, I mean, couldn't the League ask for a general permission to put the sandwich board on the common three, the week before or whatever you normally do for the next five years or something? So it, I mean, it's a waste of their time and a waste of your time. Wouldn't it make more sense to get that permission in advance for a period of time?
You're, you're preaching to the choir. I'm a little removed, I'm a little removed from this. I don't even understand why it's a discussion, Angela, at all. So I'm beyond having it be, be a given. It's for the community, right? It's for the entire community. And, uh, you know, I could just tell you what, what's, what's been happening the past five years. But I, but I'll go back and revisit why many years ago we had to, you know. I know, I know there was some, um, one year, uh, there was a disconnect between the approvals and another organization thought they had their sign up and they had booked the space. So it becomes very competitive, whether it be, right? Whether it be, um, some of the other nonprofits in town, whether, whether it be the Boy Scouts.
Right.
Right?
And, right, the police are common for how many signs are up and they are really strict on that. And there are other organizations that annually and regularly, even churches want their signs up on a regular basis, too. So it makes it sticky.
Yep.
Well, I think it again comes back to how important is town meeting?
Right.
What's, what's the level of importance that we attribute as a community to town meeting? Because, you know, maybe it's my position, but I think it needs to be above most of the other things.
Dana just posted, in case you guys didn't see it, she is indeed listening. Didn't want you to think that she had left the call, so she's putting the kids to bed, but she's engaged. She's engaged and she's listening. So yes, uh, you know, to what support. Steve, you've had your hand up?
Uh, yeah, just in terms of, uh, coming up with some creative ideas. Uh, I know I've seen, uh, in the past, when I think about things that have caught my eye on the common, a couple of years ago, there was a domestic violence group that lit the whole common up in purple and that was really eye catching. I think everybody kind of has an image of that in their, stick in their mind. I was thinking, you know, over in Russia, they do like video projections onto the side of the buildings. It seems to be a thing that they do over in Europe. I don't see it as much in the U.S., but it might be cool to like, I don't know, on the side of the PCA or the Town Hall or something like that. A couple, the one, maybe one night a week or two, two or three nights a week before town meeting, just have like some video projection up on the side of a building, um, playing a video message saying, "Come to town meeting." And that way, like, it's a, it's a thing that kind of changes the image of a building of town meeting. And when there's that dramatic of a change, it really will catch people's eye.
Angela, do you have a budget?
I think you can, I think of money to do this is and should be available. I, I would argue for whatever reasonable amount of money is needed to do anything that's gonna bring people to town meeting or, or allow them to access.
Steve, I like that idea a lot.
Yeah, to catch the eye.
The, the other thing I was gonna say is maybe the, maybe the banner going across the, the road there would be more effective if there was a stop, a stoplight at that intersection.
Now you're going too far.
Right in Tom's yard.
We're going downhill on that one, so. All, all great ideas, all wonderful, you know, input that we can all, all pull together. But I think we're all saying we can do better. This is the bottom, this is the bottom line. Any other questions, any other input for this meeting? Okay, the next, the next meeting is, oh, name change. So I don't know if you caught my note, but, um, will be, we need to go before, uh, the select board on October 26th to get approvals, I guess, or whatever, for the name change to access to town meeting. So once we do that, we did, we did kind of, you know, joke, no, joke around. We did discuss branding and what we would use. So in the background, think, think about that perspective on, um, what, do we have a logo? Would we think about a logo?
Because. Megan, you're doing our logo, right?
Excuse me?
Yes, I'm on it, I'm on the logo.
Oh, you're working on it? Serious?
We, well, I will be, sure. Are we going to the select board on the 26th as a, uh, formality? Are we officially requesting the name change? What are we putting, what, what is happening just for the sake of the minutes? What, what will that look like? We have to just go before them to say what?
I don't even know if we have to go before them. Joey said it'll be on the agenda, so it's, it's a formality, I think. I mean, I'll be on the call. And Angela, you'll be on the call anyway, right? So.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna see if I can sneak in the clicker conversation. Oh, since you're already on it, I'll just see if I can, I can ask her if I can just piggyback for three seconds.
Okay.
If I could say anything in three seconds.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's, that's the 26th. And, you know, branding and whatever, we come up with, with a logo, it would be kind of fun. Our next meeting, uh, we agreed to was gonna be on November 16th, I think. Was it November 16th?
That's a Tuesday.
Yes, it was, Diane.
Thank you. And is everybody still good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so in the interim, working groups, go do your thing. Um, report back, we'll fine tune as, as we, as we move along. Will, um, at this point, high level plan for making recommendations in the six month window, maybe Angela, June or something, or?
That's eight months, but that's fine.
Okay, true, true. So May?
No, that's fine. Whatever you guys do is fine. I mean, I feel like you're gonna get somewhere.
It's helpful for me if I know what the what and when is, so.
Well, I think as long as you get in June or earlier, you'll be fine. I mean, once you get into the summer, it's always hard to get in.
True.
Done, so.
Okay, does that work for everybody? So we'll, we'll be able to put a list of recommendations. Okay, does that work for everybody? So we'll, we'll be able to put a list of recommendations together to go before select board prior to June 1st. We'll leave, we'll leave it open-ended, at least for now, as, as we meld. Does anybody need any, anything in, the, everybody, the working groups know what they're going after and what they're doing, right? Other than more time, it sounds like time is the, in getting schedules. That seems to be a challenge. Valerie, you're smiling?
I think we're good. I'll move to adjourn.
Okay.
I want to go put myself to bed.
Okay, I'll, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Diane.